Time is now 7:00 PM. We will now reconvene into open session. Folks, that's good. Thank you for joining us tonight. The meetings of the Board are open to the public but are not a meeting of the public. UMBL ISD Board of Trustees meets monthly in a regular meeting to receive reports from staff and take actions and recommendations of the Superintendent. Remember, there are students and other guests present. To maintain decorum, respectful behavior is expected. Disruptive behavior will not be allowed. And with that, our first item are our pledges. Mr. Gabrowski, would you lead us tonight?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Honor and the text of the law. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state, under God, one and indivisible.
And now, please join me in prayer. Thank you, may be seated. Okay, these are gonna be some good things. Dr. Fagan, I'm gonna turn this to you in just a moment. I'm just gonna introduce and say, Dr. Fagan, will you please introduce tonight's inspiring moments?
Absolutely. Welcome, everyone. It's great to have you all here. Lots of familiar faces in the back, back there to, for some of the awards tonight. Each year, UMBL ISD FFA students spend countless hours preparing their animals for show. But during the weeks leading up, they also build friendships with students in special education, serving as their FFA buddy, and helping them prepare for the annual Unified Livestock Show. During this process, the FFA students share their love of agriculture while offering an opportunity to experience the thrill of showing an animal. Tonight's inspiring moment gives a look into Unified Livestock Show from practice to the show ring.
The Unified Show is a time when we get to create a bond with a special needs kid.
We teach them how to show and what we do in show.
It's just a good opportunity to teach them about agriculture and just the different skills that they can learn.
And with the Unified Show, we're able to get them to experience something a little bit more fun, a little bit more out of their comfort zone, to expand more of their interest in what they might want to do later in life.
Three years ago, when I started it, it was really important to me to start it because I had so many special needs kids that were taking my ag classes and they just wanted to be around the animals. They wanted to learn about the animals. And my students included them so much just in the classroom without ever being near an animal. And I knew that this was just something that UMBL ISD really needed to start because the interest was there and I knew how big it would grow to eventually.
So you remember, her name is Peanut Butter. And I've had her since September, like late September, early October. And then you get to show her on Thursday, on a Wednesday, you get to show her Wednesday. Are you excited or are you nervous?
I'm excited but kinda nervous about the next one.
Yeah? It's okay, I feel nervous before I show all the time. And then remember, you're gonna wanna make sure you look at her legs and make sure they're all even. Right now, they look, right now, they look pretty even, so she looks good.
Why do you like this program?
Because I like animals and I like to like pet the animals.
What do you think of your buddy, your FFA buddy?
She's really nice and I feel like we would get along.
Once they start to get to know their buddies, they get to know them on a one-on-one basis and then they start to say hi to them in the hallways and they might have a class with them occasionally. And so they actually kind of form a friendship because they have like three to five practices and then the main show. And so they get to work with them a lot, so they, they develop a friendship. And so that, to me, is like the most important thing that the FFA buddies learn.
Hi, I'm Becca Culver and this is my unified buddy.
Hi, my name is Aleah.
Aleah, what are you showing this year?
This year, I'm showing a lamb.
What's her name?
Storm.
Did you show last year?
Yes.
How did you do?
Good.
Did you win?
Yes.
What did you win?
I won a buckle.
It's just so special because last year, we actually had a class together. So then outside of our class, I also got to like help her show my lamb. And then winning it really just made it, like we both have matching buckles. Like when I wear my buckle, like it reminds me of like me and Aleah won this together, like it was a group effort.
I have to work with all five high schools and coordinate with each of the ag teachers and making sure they have their FFA buddies lined up and their unified athletes lined up. But it all comes together, you know, in the end, and kind of come to a finalization, then get to show in the show ring. So for them to have that opportunity to walk away with a ribbon or a banner or a buckle, it's, it's really special.
The winner of the show is gonna be the winner of the grand championship.
What does, what does it feel like to win grand champion?
Oh, I feel good.
What do you think about your belt buckle?
It was pretty cool.
Are you gonna get a belt for it now? You gonna wear it?
Uh, yes, sir.
It's just the excitement, you know, because some of these kids have never participated in sports or, you know, after-school activities or anything like that.
I go to Atascocita. I'm very excited today.
We're very happy that they also include our special kids. You know, a lot of times, they don't have the opportunities that regular kids do, so this is very important or we feel very grateful that the school is allowing us to do this and my son to participate.
Very neat. I'm so happy my parents are here today. Sorry, I always get emotional because it means a lot that the kids are willing to dedicate their time to help out the kids that are special needs. And it's always been something that means a lot to me. Because not everybody is willing to include them in advance, so when he's allowed to do something, that brings him a lot of happiness, that just, it just means a lot to us as parents.
I love to be able to see these kids every single day, get to greet them, get to say hi to them, give them high fives and fist bumps. And I love being able to share what I do every single day and give that opportunity to them. I feel like since we, as FFA members, have to follow the FFA motto, which a part of that line is living to serve, we're serving these kids in our community and we're giving them, them the opportunity to experience what we get to do and learn everything that we're doing in FFA and agriculture.
Well, I mean, actions definitely speak louder than words and that is the last line of our motto. And I think that the Unified Show is a perfect example of that. The FFA buddies, they want to give up their time and they want to work with the unified athletes. And I think that is a perfect example of living to serve.
Wow, I love that show. What an awesome event. This week is National FFA Week and this year marked the third annual Unified Livestock Show. Tonight, we have some of the stars of our inspiring moment with us right here in the room. Kingwood Park High School Agriculture Teacher, Genevieve Ubanowski. She's the chair of the Unified Show. Also with us are Summer Creek Students, Karen Garcia, Kingwood Parks, Erin Cinco, and Addison Robbins. And Atascocita Students, Becca Culver and Aleah Simpson. We are so proud of all of you and we are so happy you are here tonight. And you obviously did a fantastic job with your animals, so congratulations on your belt buckles. And thanks to our FFA students for your hard work and partnership and giving. It's, it's a really phenomenal event. We're very, very proud of all of you, so thank you so much. All right. Well, it's hard to beat that one, isn't it? Yeah, we're all like, whoo, okay, moving on, we're gonna try.
Dr. Fagan?
Yes.
I did notice when the young man stood up, he bought a belt to wear with his new belt buckle.
Does he have it on? All right.
Yes, he does. There we go. Sorry, I didn't mean to, didn't mean to interrupt you, but...
Well, thank you for pointing that out. I, I had missed that, so congratulations again. Yes, we love it. It looks great. All right, February was a historic month for the UMBL ISD Counseling Department as a record, ten UMBL ISD campuses were recognized with CREST Awards. UMBL ISD Senior Director of Personalized Student Success, Dr. Melissa Lee, is here with us tonight to share more about this outstanding accomplishment.
Good evening. As Dr. Fagan mentioned, I'm here to talk about the CREST Award. I'm honored tonight to recognize ten UMBL ISD counseling teams who were recently recognized at the Texas School Counselor Association Conference for winning the prestigious Counselors Reinforcing Excellence for Students in Texas or the CREST Award. The CREST Award is a symbol of excellence in counseling services and recognizes school counselors for their exceptional contributions to student development, academic achievement, and well-being. Additionally, in UMBL ISD, our students benefit from a comprehensive and personalized counseling program and these ten campuses have demonstrated their commitment to our students and their success. As Dr. Fagan mentioned, this is a historic year for UMBL ISD with ten campuses achieving this milestone. Previously, our highest number of winners was four. While there are over forty counselors who are responsible for winning this award, we have representatives here from each of the ten campuses tonight. So as I call you, please come up. Representing Atascocita High School tonight is Anita Stetson and with her, her principal, Will Falker, come on up. Representing Atascocita Springs Elementary is Janelle Thompson and with her is her principal, Cheryl Fennel. Representing Grove Elementary is Andrea Jean and with her, her principal, Angela Bland. Representing UMBL High School is Esteban Costante and with him is his principal, Dyrus Cosby. Representing Kingwood High School is Stella Campbell and with her are her principals, Dr. Michael Nasra and Associate Principal Meredith LeBlanc. Representing Kingwood Middle School is Erin Gutierrez and with her, her principal, Michael Representing Riverwood Middle School is Shayla Green and with her, her principal, Matthew Representing River Pines Elementary is Stephanie Zamora and with her, her principal, Rachel Representing Timberwood Middle School is Jennifer Carter and with her, her principal, Ken Buck. Representing Wood Creek Middle School is Mariana Reyes and with her, her principal, Dr. Alan Additionally, while they're coming up, we want to take a moment to recognize Ty Hobbs, our Director of Personalized Counseling. I can't even say all the good things because they're cheering her, but her, without her advocacy and dedication to the counselors and the students of UMBL ISD, this is evident through her historic accomplishment of leading us in ten CREST campuses. So we have a banner here for a picture with all of you and we have a little something for Ty as well.
Hey, if y'all wanna come up and take pictures, it's okay. Nobody up here by us. Now, this is supposed to be reading, the council's on the front row, right? The president's on the back. I thought y'all got it. I don't understand. All right. You just get this way, just a little bit, take this, get this down right here. Come at the chair. I'll see where I'm at from over here. And on three, one, two, three, another, one, two, three. One, two, three, catch you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I just have to say, before they all leave, UMBL ISD has the best counseling program of anywhere and has phenomenal leadership with Dr. Lee and Ty Hobbs, Matt Smith. It's an amazing team and this is just, I love when we get these big recognitions to sort of have that outside validation. So congratulations to all of those folks who won this year. And I think next year, we'll have even more. They probably just felt like they couldn't give us all of them. And?
Chastity Urban.
Sorry, yes. Okay, and you wanna ask her a question?
Dr. Lee, thank you very much and again, congratulations to everybody. But let me ask you, from your standpoint now, and I know we had some issues, there were, last year was difficult, the last previous school year, how do you feel we are in terms of staffing with counselors, having adequate resources at the newest levels that were added on top of the campus counselors? Could you just let us know where, from your very good vantage point, how you feel things are at in terms of confidence?
Sure, absolutely, thank you. I love talking about our mental health program and all of the amazing work that our counselors get to do every day. So as most of you know, our school counselors do amazing unprecedented work in comparison to other districts where they meet with every single one of our students personally every single year, secondary twice a year. Additionally, with Esther Funding, we hired three LPCs and we have licensed professional counselors who, with parent consent and after being referred by their campus counselors, are able to receive therapy sessions during the school day with licensed professional counselors. We were able to secure a Department of Education grant last year to increase that from three to seven. So we now have six licensed professional counselors that provide therapy services for any students who need them in UMBL ISD. And then we have a substance abuse counselor as well, who's an LPC and addresses specifically our students who have unfortunately turned to substance abuse as a way to cope for mental health. We also, through State Comp Ed Funding, have five additional support counselors who support the work that those student wellness counselors do and help our students that have the highest needs on our campuses. So we have gone from three to twelve in our mental health unit and it has been an amazing support and then augmenting the work that our school counselors do and being able to provide a higher level of support for our kids who, it's actually really hard as a parent if you've never tried to go out and find a therapist for your kid and wanting to make sure that you find the right connection. So not only can we provide that through our schools with our LPCs, but they will help find outside counselors if they're looking to continue that as well.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Finally, our staff members, all of them, go way above and beyond for our students every single day. And Ms. Jerry Monbaron, Chief Community Engagement Officer, is going to introduce our superstaffers for this month.
Thank you, Dr. Fagan. Yes, they do go above and beyond. And so each month, campuses and departments select an individual to be honored as a superstaffer for their outstanding work in advancing student achievement. A drawing is held and three honorees receive additional recognition at a school board meeting, including a gift card thanks to an award sponsor. And this month, Superstaffer Awards are sponsored by Mr. Siddiqui at Dairy Queen on Wilson Roads. Mr. Siddiqui, would you like to come up and join us and can we show our congratulations, our thanks?
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so let's start tonight with our elementary superstaffer, which is the real teacher at Whispering Pines Elementary, and her name is Jessica DeGraff. As she's coming up, if her AP Tiffany Grant Scott would also like to join us, come on up, Tiffany, thank you. So let me tell you about what the fans said at Whispering Pines about Jessica. She always goes above and beyond to help her team. She's willing to step in to support others and does not hesitate to be of service to her teammates or others in our community. Students are not afraid to take academic risk as a result of the environment she created. We are very fortunate to have her at Whispering Pines Elementary. Congratulations, Jessica.
Okay, let's go on to our secondary superstaffer, which is a math teacher at Creekwood Middle School, Hannah Cunningham. Joining Hannah is her principal, Ms. Blackshear, she comes on up. And let me tell you about what they said about Hannah. So it's important to know that Hannah is a first-year new teacher at Creekwood and she has done an outstanding job with her math classes. She has such enthusiasm when speaking about her classes and she's always looking for ways to improve. She also stepped up in her first year of teaching to sponsor Stuko and she's done an amazing job getting the students involved and thinking out of the box about how they can improve their campus. Her excitement and love for students is contagious. And then being honored as our support superstaffer tonight is the Administrative Assistant to the Assistant Superintendents of Secondary Schools, Irma Hernandez. And I think Irma has her grandson. He's quite adorable. So as Irma is coming up, let me also ask Donnie Bowdrin, Trey Kramer, and Todd Hicks to come on up and join her. And so this is, yeah. So let me tell you a little about Irma. She is an extremely hard-working and dedicated employee. She works tirelessly to support the office of the Assistant Superintendents. She's excellent at multitasking, communicating with parents, organizing events, and keeping her team members organized, which if we all know Trey and Donnie, can be a big job at times. Sorry, that wasn't in the script. Her ability to have always a calm demeanor with difficult situations is a quality that is invaluable to the process of helping our families. We are so thankful to have such a loyal and dedicated member of our team. Congratulations, Irma.
Since we are here and I'm really impressed with FFA, so I would like to...
In the picture? So this is Mr. Siddiqui's first time to sponsor, but he's not our first time to be involved in UMBL ISD. And he just told me he was so impressed with the Unified FFA program that he wants to donate six...
Tickets for each game, for two games.
For two games, for two Rockets games for parents and those, for teachers.
Six tickets for each game.
That is incredible. So thank you very much. We'll make sure those...
Twelve tickets.
Twelve tickets. Thank you. Appreciate that very much. We'll be in touch then. Okay, thank you.
Yeah, my number?
Yes. All right. As much as I'd like to just keep going with these, that is the end of the awards and recognitions for this evening and they were fantastic, so congratulations, everyone.
Yeah, that was great. That was great. And now we'll lose a lot of our audience, so unfortunate. So we don't take it personally.
Freeze up seats.
Okay, now we'll move on to item F, questions and comments by patrons or employees of the district regarding agenda items or any other matter. Board encourages comment from, comments from citizens of the district or from district employees. Anyone wishing to speak either as an individual or as a representative of a group may do so following the procedure outlined on the agenda. The Board asks that comments pertain to public education issues and be no longer than tonight. Considering the number we have, it'll be one and a half minutes. Okay, and I'm gonna ask, since we do have, I believe, twenty-one people, as we've done in the past, I'm gonna ask four of you to come up and one to the podium and the next three, Ms. Mount will show you where you can sit and it'll help us move through it a little quicker. Okay, the first four I'm calling up are Carolyn Berry, Lorena Garcia, Reverend Stacy Sweet, and Winterford Leon Hudson. Is she one of the speakers? Is that Ms. Hudson? Because if she's not, I'll call somebody else. No, that should be Ms. Berry speaking. Jamie, do we have all three next speakers? Is that Ms. Hut... Okay, okay. All right, I'm sorry, Ms. Berry, go ahead.
Good evening. I'm going to stand up, speak up, and sit down. What school chaplaincy is not, is not a denomination, nor is it a religion. School chaplaincy rather just embraces and meets the students right where they are, whether it's emotionally and/or spiritually, but overall being available and approachable. It is a school community.
Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent and School Board Trustees. My name's Lorena Garza and for the past fourteen years, I've been the faith leader and sponsor of the United for Christ at Dickinson High School and the junior high schools. I am also the Director of Chaplain Affairs with the National School Chaplain Association. We're serving twenty-eight thousand seven hundred and fifty-seven schools in twenty-three countries, which provides services to over twenty-three million people, giving us a massive database proving schools that employ chaplains show a drastic reduction in school violence, violence in the home, alcohol and drug consumption, and decreased bullying. It has improved through by thirty-seven percent increase in high school graduations, eighty percent reduction in teen pregnancies, and zero reported suicide. Spiritual care through chaplaincy has long been recognized as specialized approach that provides positive guidance away from negativity and destructive tendencies. School chaplains are not here to replace LPCs. We're here to work alongside the LPCs and provide a moral compass for students. School chaplains provide their service in council based on parent consent. This method of informal council has proven highly successful in many sectors, including government agencies, hospitals, corporations, and sport teams, to name a few. I'm glad that there are many families represented here, that you have a strong support system in your home. Your child may never need to see a counselor or a school chaplain, but chaplains are also here for students that don't have a strong support system at home. Perhaps they're being raised by a grandmother or an aunt because their parent has passed away or is incarcerated. They need someone present to listen to them and give them hope in the midst of their personal storm. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Reverend Sweet?
I'm Stacy Sweet. I'm one of the pastors at Kingwood Methodist Church and I have also served as a chaplain. And I am against having chaplains in the schools. As a trained chaplain, we are not trained to deal with mental health issues. When we are in that hospital, we stay in our lane and we are there to provide spiritual support at the request of a patient or if you were in a, in a police department or military or whatever the case may be. But we are there at their request. I don't see children without their parents' consent, even in a hospital situation. The potential here for harm, I think, is great. It's a vaguely written bill that leaves many wide-open and unanswered questions as far as implementation, as far as how this would be carried out, and the ways in which it would impact our community. We have a wonderful relationship already started. UMBL ISD has been incredibly hospitable to... UMBL ISD has been incredibly hospitable to churches and faith groups, and allowed us to come alongside churches and schools. Our church has a relationship with foster, and we would not want to disturb that or change what we have going, because it's already, we have this opportunity to be there for students and be there and meet those individual needs according to what those schools are needing. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Hudson?
Good evening. I'm a chaplain with a major healthcare system in Houston. I'm also a resident of UMBL. Let me start by saying that I do not believe that chaplains have the same skill set as school counselors. Therefore, they should not be replaced. If I were in a decision-making chair needing to write a job description, I would first look at those descriptions of chaplains in hospitals, as well as military chaplains, and build from there. I was excited for this opportunity for the board for the following reasons. Chaplains in schools would provide additional support for other schools, particularly in view of the many traumatic attacks on our nation and in our schools over the past years. Chaplains are called and experienced in providing trauma and grief support. Chaplains are entered faith. We provide spiritual and emotional support for patients, their families, and the staff, regardless of what their religious beliefs are. I envision that having chaplains in school would provide spiritual and emotional support for students, their parents, and the staff. Chaplains respect boundaries and would comply with the guidelines outlined by the boards. In closing, I believe that allowing chaplains to be a part of our education system is a win-win. We pledge to do no harm. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, and I'm going to ask the next four speakers to come up. Stephen Hatch, Jerry Davis, Rabbi Dan Gordon, and Clifford Height, if I'm saying that correctly. Go ahead, Mr. Hatch.
Good evening. My name is Stephen Hatch. I am the Executive Director of Operations for Holt Construction. I come before you tonight to discuss the ongoing situation as it relates to the pending litigation spurred by the delay in order provided permitting and damages associated therewith in regards to the UMBL multipurpose rooms. Since July 2022, Holt has urged the district to submit this claim to mediation. Holt took all the proper steps to do so, including proposing, excuse me, several names of potential mediators to meet the February 28 deadline. These steps have not been answered in the proper timeframe, and thus, per the court calendar, both sides are now beginning the lengthy and costly process of discovery. Additionally, the district made three different requests in October, November, and December, all of which were granted by Holt for the district to join the architects in the lawsuit. It was Holt's understanding that by granting the extension of requests, mediation would be scheduled, as all parties related to the delay in permitting would have a seat at the table to discuss the circumstances. Despite Holt's granting these requests, the deadline to join the architects in the lawsuit has come and gone, and the district indicated to Holt that they were necessary to the party to the lawsuit. We again urge the board to avoid any further delay in making a sincere attempt to resolve the matter promptly. Failure to do so will cost the taxpayers of the district hundreds of thousands of dollars in attorney's fees and litigation expenses. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Davis?
Good evening. That's what it's been like trying to communicate to get mediation. We would say something, and then that long pause is what we experience. We're just asking to go to the table. That's it. We're trying to do something to figure this out, collaborate, save costs. You know, we're stakeholders as well, and we're just trying to collaborate and mediate. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Rabbi Gordon?
This is the first time I've attended a meeting of the UMBL ISD School Board, and I was so thrilled to see the recognition of the counseling program, and equally thrilled to hear the report about the LPCs and all the support that our students are getting towards mental health. Like Reverend Sweet, I'm also opposed to the proposal for chaplains in the schools. I am also a chaplain. I'm a hospital chaplain with Baylor-St. Luke's Medical System. I'm also a prison chaplain with the Texas Department of Criminal Justice. To become a hospital chaplain, I trained specifically on how to work with patients. To become a prison chaplain, I trained specifically about how to work with prison inmates. A school counselor is a much more vague kind of a thing, and with the support that we have through our school counselors and our LPCs and the mental health programs, I have a concern about counselors, because I believe that our children have the opportunity, and we have the opportunity, to give them the right to feel like everybody else. I'm Rabbi of the only Jewish synagogue in the UMBL Kingwood area, and there are very few Jewish children. There are some Muslim children, some Hindu children. And if chaplains are appointed, and if chaplains apply, they most likely would come from the majority. And minority children have an opportunity to feel just like everybody else. And I'd like to trust our parents and our families and our churches and our mosques and communities, to trust them to give that kind of spiritual support to the children. Thank you.
Thank you, Rabbi. Mr. Height?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much. My name is Clifford, and just to share with you a personal experience. When I was in high school, one of our coaches through the FCA had a very positive influence on my life. Nobody in my family had ever gone to college. Thanks to his influence, I went to college. Thanks to his influence, I became a better student. I became more respectful of my teachers. I became more respectful of my peers, and I believed that I became a better person. Eventually, I went on to college. I did well in sports while I was in college, also became an educator, just graduated, or what you would call retired, from HISD after 35 years, and made a lot of positive influence in the life of young people out there also. So I believe that we should have chaplains, because the NSA, NSCA chaplains, they're certified and trained to work with students and to come alongside of the counselors. We're not here to replace any... They're not here to replace anybody. They're here to offer the support that is so much needed, and they're not going to replace any other professionals. They complement the mental health services, safety, social, emotional well-being. The law enforcement and schools with chaplains have proven to be safer places. The facts prove that with school chaplains, there's a reduced pregnancy rate of over 80%, increased graduation rates of over 37%, considerably reduced discipline issues, and in the last 14 years, not one reported suicide. So if we vote against chaplains, it's like saying we don't care about the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Height. Appreciate it. Okay. Next, I'm going to... The next four I'm going to ask to come up are Alex Toliver, I hope I say that right, Justin Laurie, Tanisha Vincent, and Larissa Powell.
Hello. This is actually my first time attending one of these meetings, so excuse my ignorance. It's not in reference to anything that everyone has previously came up and spoken about. I am dealing with several issues within the UMBL ISD community. One of my main concerns that I wanted to mention today is the lack of communication. There are several things that are taking place within our community at the schools, and because of everyone that's behind the scenes making the decisions, they are making the decisions not to inform us. So if your student goes to one high school and the other student goes to another, and they are communion when they go to the mall and all of these different places, crimes are taking place. We see suicides. We see guns inside the schools, shootings, and the Columbine. All of these things exist within America. One of the superintendents told me that the power of communication is the most important tool that we have. Given that one particular statement, it's all the more reason why it's very important for us as parents to be aware of these things that are taking place within our community, regardless of the fact it's not the school that our child particularly goes to. Because those conversations that can be had at home, talking, seeing what's going on, being involved, and if we are aware of those things, we can be proactive and not react when certain things take place. So I was just very appalled at the fact of the things that we are left out about.
Thank you, Ms. Toliver. Next, Mr. Laurie, then Ms. Vincent.
Last week was Valentine's Day. So perhaps it is appropriate to discuss the cost of romance among the senior leadership at our school district. I will not harp on the ethical ramifications of subordinates dating their bosses and vice versa. Instead, I'd like to call to attention the financial consequences. So far, the amount of legal fees alone is over $500,000, and the billing meter is still rising. Since the boss is compromised, the boss cannot adhere to the written DIA policy by handling certain complaints in-house. Therefore, outside counsel must be sourced, they must be procured, and then they must be paid. This has caused you, the taxpayer, over $500,000 so far. Again, the legal fees only exist because the leader is compromised and cannot perform their responsibilities. The district's test scores relative to the state average have plummeted. Roughly 400 school districts have surpassed UMBL ISD in the statewide rankings in the last several years alone, but no one is allowed to talk about that. No one else is allowed to talk about the controversial and unethical behavior of the leadership either. Is this the vision where we want our district to be? And what you as board members and you as elected officials, is this what you strive to achieve?
Thank you. Ms. Vincent?
Good evening to each of you. I am Tanisha Vincent, and today I stand here on behalf of Loving Houston, where I serve as the District Coordinator for UMBL ISD. Our vision is to see every school in our district with a committed church partner, and we are committed to seeing that happen right here. Today, I stand with great courage as I share and provide you with real facts regarding the work currently being done by churches for schools in UMBL ISD. Churches are attending leaders gatherings to learn more about how to serve schools well. Just on Tuesday, we came together praying for the safety, education, and mental health of our students, community, and parents. Churches are serving as mentors. They're meeting needs of students and families, including and providing toiletries, weekend meals for food insecure families, filling in for Grandparents' Day in the event that someone is deceased. Our churches are supporting teachers by offering breakfast, lunches, and snacks. They're praying for our teachers. They're serving as teachers aides. They're making copies. They're attending... They're tutoring. They're doing book buddies, volunteering for school-sponsored events, just to name a few. Lastly, I'll share that as of today, for the 2324 school year, 2,900 volunteer hours have been logged from our churches. These are our churches serving and meeting the needs in this community. There is more work we want to do, and more work needs to be done, but we need you, and we want to do it together. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. I was going to make my speech concerning chaplains in schools, but now I feel whether that they materialize or not, our chaplains aren't vetted. We can't even hold our leaders accountable. How are we going to hold chaplains accountable? I'm here tonight to stress the fact that in our district, we are having some issues with the trans word. It's transparency. I attended the special board meeting last Thursday, February 15. I listened as two motions were read and ratified regarding the UIL athletic director who's been placed on a leave for Title IX investigation. I was horrified to hear that about a half a million dollars has been spent to date on legal fees to clean up the mess of a UIL and athletic director's unethical behavior. Why aren't we discussing this tonight? Has the 10-month investigation been held up again? Where is the ethics? Where is the accountability? What is this going to cost us now? Half a million dollars? I'm just disgusted. That money could have given our teachers and paraprofessionals and support staff a raise. We could have hired more certified counselors, invested in our IT program, helped our sped department. It could have invested into a watchdog program to protect our youth from bullying, but we spent it on legal fees to clean up a mess. Half a million dollars? Good God, that's criminal. Are you protecting the UIL director because he was recently married to the superintendent? Would you have done this for any other employee in our district? Spent half a million dollars to fix this mess? You guys are sad and disappointing.
Thank you. Okay, I'm going to ask the next four speakers to come forward, please. John Cobb, Lorena Garza... Oh. Oh, that was the one Karen, you said it was Don. I'm sorry. Okay. No, I... Okay. So then John Cobb, Pastor Haney, and Fallon Chataway, and Scott Ford.
Old age thing.
It's okay.
I'd really like to take time to thank the resource officers at Kingwood High School for their quick response in neutralizing a potential dangerous situation. It's nice to know that resource officers are present, and UMBL ISD schools respond quickly to possible firearm threats. Wait, wait. Hold on a minute. That's not quite true. Not all schools in UMBL ISD have resource officers. Only the five high schools in UMBL ISD have resource officers. Middle and elementary schools have not received their resource officers currently. UMBL ISD has decided to sit on their hands where their thumbs pointed up and not come... And when it comes to the safety of our teachers and students in our middle school and elementary schools...
Mr. Cobb, I'm going to interrupt you, because that what you said is not true or accurate as far as resource officers, police officers at middle schools, and also now at elementary schools.
So there has been made some progress on getting resource officers?
I think a lot of progress, yes.
Is it on all of our schools yet?
So it's a work in progress. What we have done is we've reached out to other law enforcement folks in the community who are not currently our officers, and so what we're doing is... We have a plan, and about 125 officers from the community had responded to a communications outreach, and the police department utilizes those folks, plus command staff, plus new officer hires, to cover the support at all schools.
Good. I am glad that we're finally making progress in getting resource officers in our middle school and elementary schools. And it's a challenge, because we do have a shortage of law enforcement officers because of the bad publicity they've been getting recently, and people just do not want to be law officers anymore. And maybe it's time to where the board and UMBL ISD community start thinking outside the box and being innovative and coming up with new and interesting solutions instead of working with the status quo. There's a lot of schools contrary... Well, there's some... There's a lot of schools contrary, well, there's some districts, and contrary to what Mr. Holmes has brought out, have met the state mandate by thinking outside the box. And maybe it's time that we start thinking outside the box and find solutions.
Thank you. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
No, it's Philip Haney. Thank you very much. Again, my name is Philip Haney. I'm a pastor and a former chaplain at St. Luke's and Texas Children's. I have experienced and the firsthand benefits of a chaplaincy program. I am here to petition the board to adopt the use of chaplains in the HIS system. I believe it would be, and I would highly recommend, that having chaplains ready and available in our schools to pray, to assist, to offer comfort in crisis situations for our students, our teachers, and staff members. It would be indeed a valuable addition to our school system. I also realize that there is much to consider in the implementation of this type of program, but I truly believe that the benefits for such a program will outweigh the effort required to put this program into effect. I am hopeful, and I pray, that this board will recognize the value of this program and vote favorably for its implementation. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity to express my conviction.
You're very welcome. Thank you. Next, Ms. Chataway.
In August of 2023, a group of more than 100 Texas chaplains urged school boards not to allow chaplains in their schools before the bill was passed, and I'll quote them tonight. "The chaplaincy programs are an affront to the religious freedoms, rights, and students of parents, as well as church-state separation, and the programs would take funding away from trained mental health professionals who are better equipped to serve students." The chaplains continued, "Because of our training and experience, we know that chaplains are not a replacement for school counselors or safety measures in our public schools. And we urge you to reject this flawed policy option. It is harmful to our public schools and the students and families they serve." I am here to say, I agree with that 100%, religion belongs in churches and private schools. That's why those things exist. If you would like your religion available, go to a private school. We have LPCs, and yes, we have a great counseling program, as we just saw with the awards that were presented here tonight. If you think that they will not eventually replace the LPCs, where a school or a district, specifically this one, as was shown to us by the construction company, that they would eventually replace, they will, they will find shortcuts where they can. We saw that evidenced this evening. So let's make sure that the only people unlicensed, undegreed, untrained to help our school does not bring in more chaplains. Right now, the only people in those positions without training and education to help our kids are you.
Thank you very much. Let me say before you start, congratulations on a very successful program you ran during the break.
Well, I'm done, thank you.
Hats off to you, that's great work.
My name is Scott Ford, I'm a teacher in the district, and I'm here to talk about the exciting updates of the IT certification program that we are developing. We are offering the certification for the first time in the history of this district. By the way, my students watching, hi. Over the vacation, we had around 30 people attend our week of certification training. We had students from every high school, we had students from Summer Peak High School, Atassashead High School, UMBLE High School, Kingwood High School, K Park High School, and Sconzo High School, even had a kid in here from Aldine ISD. That's right, Aldine, but what? We had faculty and staff show up. We had community members that discovered the training through the UMBLE ISD Parents' Page. Ooh, are we supposed to say that out loud? It was a fantastic training. Since that training was offered, we've had four additional people get certified. I was hoping to get more people taking the test, but we are having an issue with the CTE department getting vouchers, but we're working directly with an international nonprofit organization called CompTIA, and they're giving our kids 16 and older a major discount. They never did 16 and under, and I've been working with them since December, and they are changing their policy for us, an international organization. We're going to try it this week and see if we can get these kids their vouchers. Final plug, next week, I'm offering that PowerPoint noob-to-ninja training. It is Tuesday, Thursday night, so thank you for your time, and remember, schoolagi's the worst.
Thank you, Mr. Ford, appreciate all your efforts. Okay, Ms. Mount, I'm going to ask you to help me here because we only have, we have five speakers left. I'm going to have them all come up if you can handle that, please. Next is Jerry Martin, Perla Cummings, Stacy Smith, William Mealy, and Chaplain Blaha. Hope I got that right. Pastor Martin, when you're ready, go ahead.
Thank you. I'm Jerry Martin, I'm the executive pastor of the Light of the World Christian Fellowship Church here in UMBLE. I'm here to speak on behalf of our congregation on this matter of the HIS impending vote on whether to institute a policy to have chaplains on school campuses. For several years, our church has been involved in providing mentors and prayer support to schools in this district. I've served as a mentor to a young student at North Beth Elementary School. Several members of our church have served as mentors at UMBLE High School. The church-school partnership has presented us with an opportunity to serve the students, to serve the teachers, to serve the administrators in the schools. So we are in support of strengthening and expanding, as appropriate, the relationship of the church-school partnership instead of voting to have chaplains on campus. The chaplain policy or program is likely to create more problems and burdens for the district than any benefit the students in the district may receive. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Ms. Cummings?
Hi, my name is Perla. I am a parent here at UMBLE High School, I mean, I'm sorry, UMBLE ISD. I do have many children that go to different schools in UMBLE. I believe having chaplains here in school, it is good, because I just want to share just a personal experience as a parent. My daughter, she was going to Kingwood High School, and she did get involved in drugs and vaping, and she did see, speak to a counselor. She, I did let her teachers know about the situation, but the counselor, you know, she was helpful, but she was pushing more towards her grades academically, you know, how, what she needs to do academically to graduate and where to stand attendance-wise. But I felt that she needed more of an emotional support, and I think that's where chaplains come in, along with the counselors, to help, to give the students hope. It was four rough years with my daughter that I had to withdraw her from Kingwood and put her in homeschool and take her to other different schools because we were just going through a lot with those rough four years. So I believe that having the chaplains in there with the counselors, it would help them, you know, to speak about what they're going through as well. You know, as a parent, I couldn't afford a therapist or a counselor outside of school. So I believe that chaplains will be able to help the counselors as well, because I know counselors, they also, I know they do a great job, I saw what happened earlier, but I also believe that they're very busy too as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cummings. Ms. Smith?
Thank you. I'd like to thank UMBLE ISD for your many mental health initiatives and how you've expanded the mental health offerings each year. UMBLE was the recipient of a school-based mental health services grant that was a national, federal grant, one of only 103 districts nationwide, only one of five in Texas. In difficult times, UMBLE ISD has been innovative and has stepped up to serve our students. I'm personally grateful for counselors that know my children and work with me in their best interest. School counselors help children plan for the future, handle difficult situations, develop interpersonal skills, offer counseling services, and help with academic strategies. Chaplains give spiritual care at the request of a patient or person. School counselors are required to undergo years of schooling, be certified by the State Board of Education, are well-trained on the mental health needs of children and youth. Chaplains, according to this bill, have none of these requirements. In April, the author of this bill, Senator, State Senator Mays Middleton, stated on his social media, "This week, the Senate passed SB 763 to put chaplains in our public schools. The bill will allow the important role chaplains serve for pastoral care and representing God's presence within our public schools. It does not talk about the mental health needs of students, and that is the intent of the bill, and I want to point that out because I think it's important. It's antithetical to a lot of what we've heard tonight. As written, the resolution rejects hiring or accepting as volunteers chaplains to act as school counselors." Thank you so much, and I hope that you vote on that in the affirmative.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. Next, Chaplain Mealy. It's good to see you, sir. It's been a long time since I've seen you in person.
I think school counselors are great in the school district, just like doctors are great. We don't replace doctors in hospitals either, we don't try to. Okay, my name is William Mealy. I'm a chaplain with the American Legion, Post 132, and here in UMBLE, Texas, and proud of it. I speak for the post members who are in support of having chaplains in the schools at the UMBLE ISD. Chaplains are in hospitals, military posts, and nursing homes. I have served in these locations, and as a military policeman at West Point and in Vietnam, I have observed the difference a chaplain can make. My wife and I have been trained and served in the inner healing ministry for more than 10 years, and have seen people, young and old, restored to life and happiness. We don't do it, the Holy Spirit does it. There are many, there are so many who feel lost in a confused world that no longer sees God as an answer, and had not even heard of a God who cares about them personally. We have a golden opportunity to change that for the kids in our school district. Let's do it, as it is posted in the front lobby of our school buildings. In God we trust. God bless the school board, administrators, students, and staff of UMBLE ISD. God bless America, home of the free and land of the brave.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Superintendent Fagan, President Scarfo, honored guests. As you can see, I'm Chaplain Bryan Blaha, and it's an honor to be with you again this evening. And as you can see, I am for SB Bill 763. I'm here also with my pastors from the Lord's Glory Church and many others. You know, I'm sure with the decision that you have to make, it is a heavy load, but I want to encourage you, you're not alone. I, myself, as many others here, are asking God's help for you to make a decision that will help our children, our teachers, and our administrators in our schools. The presence of chaplains are not here to take away from any churches or ministries that are currently helping in our schools. That is wonderful. We, as chaplains, are here to do is to be a benefit, to be an addition, to be a blessing to those that are already here. I would even encourage board members and teachers and administrators to become chaplains also, hint, hint, so. So, in this hour, at this time, we must not allow fear of the future of uncertainty to distract us. From the main purpose that we are all here and in this meeting, the main purpose is the children of UMBLE. I believe we need to use every tool, every opportunity that we can, and God bless you, and God bless all of you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, well, moving on, our next item is comments by individual board members. Start to my far right, Ms. Dixon.
Thank you. First, I'd like to say congratulations to our counselors, a huge honor for 10 of them to be awarded. Second, I'd like to commend the Unified Livestock Show. It was really wonderful to see the partnership between the students that had done livestock shows in the past and FFA, but also to partner with special needs students. Special needs students definitely have a place in all of our hearts, and coming from a family where my mom, actually, this is her 50-fifth year teaching, has not retired yet, and she teaches special needs students, you know, coming from a family that serves in that way, it was just really special to see that this evening. And, you know, it's interesting, too, I shared earlier with Dr. Fagan, last night I went to a dinner with, in a different capacity that I hold, but what it was with a group of some of the top attorneys in the state, and just happened to be three UMBLE High School graduates in that room. But one of them, the one that was at my table, who graduated, she said in 1997 from UMBLE High School, she's a partner in a major, major law firm. She said, "Well, not only am I a proud UMBLE High School grad, but I got all my leadership skills from FFA." And I thought that that was really commendable, and then to see what we saw tonight. And then last, this evening, I want to wish my sincere condolences to my board colleague, Mr. Ken Kirchhoff, for the loss of his father, Mr. Ralph Kirchhoff Jr. I've been thinking about you and your family and praying for you guys, and I just wanted to take a moment to say that. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Sitten.
Thank you, Mr. President. So we talked about the unified show, but we did have the barbecue cook-off and the rodeo. The last weekend of January and the first weekend of February had a record crowd at the cook-off, we had some good weather for the rodeo. Sandwiched in between was the FFA show, and I'm probably get the numbers wrong, but I believe the FFA auction raised over $340,000 for our students. Yeah, that's our community. During the course of the rodeo, we were honored to have, straight from America's Got Talent and Wood Creek Middle School, Eduardo Trevino came out and sang the National Anthem for each of our rodeo performances. And on Sunday afternoon, we were also honored to have Commissioner Ramsey come out and provide a proclamation to Eduardo with a standing ovation and the whole nine yards. Fantastic events. This is a great time of year for extracurriculars, you've got basketball playoffs going on, baseball and softball season is getting cranked up, soccer is still going on, along with so many other things. And I've been battling within myself on what to say here, so I'm going to say it anyway. I agree with a couple of our spokespersons out there, the amount of money that's being spent on attorneys is ridiculous. The rationale behind that, though, is absolutely false, and I'll leave it at that.
Thank you. Ms. Sitten, Mr. Grabowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. A good evening, everyone. Three events here that I've witnessed in the district that are kind of pretty cool, I'm going to do them in chronological order because they're all very special. In January, my beautiful bride, Chandra, and I attended the Spelling Bee Championship alone, and we ran into Mr. Scarfo there as well, and I think it went 13 rounds, if I can remember right. There was a practice round and then 13 rounds. I was eliminated in the practice round. These students are pretty special. It was a good thing I had my phone, because that's about how I spelt a third of the words. It was crazy good. And a special Ali Kawaja from Riverwood Middle School, our champion. I know you're not here, but congratulations to you. And it was a pretty cool moment, the moment he won that, and then they go to sudden death, how he stared at his dad and ran to him, and his dad picked him up and hugged him, you knew how much work that young man put into winning that tournament. He's a cool father. It's a cool father-son moment. Number two, another Umbel ISD, so I'm hitting on Mrs. Dixon's theme here, the sisters from this district. A little, I went on a cruise over spring break and ran into about 15 people from this district on the cruise ship, and we went, my daughter, who's 14, we went to family karaoke, and a little kindergartner from the district named Quinn Schooler, this is just by happenstance, who goes to Bear Branch, got up with her mom for the first 10 seconds, and it's a room, probably 300 or 400 people, you're kindergarten, you're six years old, and sung "Little Bitty" by Alan Jackson. And after her mom backed away after the first 10 seconds, she had the courage, she had the moves, she had the voice. It was amazing, and a standing ovation was given to that young lady, deservingly so. So, good on you, Ms. Quinn Schooler. And today, I did a little airport visit. Mr. Cobb, Mr. Yoder, and 20 or 21 students from his class, talking about the automation of how an airplane works. We went out to the airport, we went to the hangar, and we had four United guys plus me. When you hear these names, they promised, Mike, we are not in the witness protection program, but here are their names, I think they are, Smitty Smith, Fretz Bertsch, David Ben, and Jerry Engel. But those four guys took care of our 20 students, or 21 students amazingly well. So, I wanted to also thank John Cobb and Mike Yoder for making the journey. We gave 20 kids a very special morning, walking around the outside where the mechanics explained how the airplane works, and then we went up into the flight deck where I could show very little what I knew about that airplane. It was a fun time for all. So, thank you all very much.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Holmes.
Yeah, so, real quick, the Unified Livestock Show, that presentation, I'm a big baby cry, so that was really touching for me. And the reason why is, I think, not just in this country, but in this world, we're at a deficit in terms of empathy and kindness and just being nice. And so, that right there was one of those programs that, you know, if you ever want to connect your feelings, right, to your pocketbook, that's something that, I don't care whatever has to happen, we always need to fund programs like that. That's what sets this district apart, and it was just very touching. So, that right there, again, to the leadership team, the founders, I don't know, I don't believe the current leadership is here, but please get word to her, that was just fantastic. What you guys are doing there is just fantastic. Also, again, the superstaff reward recipients, and teachers, staff, just fantastic. Love the celebration there. And then as far as the Crest Awards, so if some of you have known me, I'm a big proponent of counselors. Some of you know, again, Laverne Hanks was my high school counselor. I was a, I was a bit of, I was one of those kids, I wasn't a problem, but I liked attention, and she helped me. She helped me, she helped me channel that, right? So, that's part of the reason why I'm here. So, counselors, you know, they're like the connective tissue between the students, the teachers, the family, the community, so very, very proud of what this district is doing. And not just for those 10 counselors that were honored, but all of the great counselors we have, I want to say thank you. Super appreciative. Mrs. Hobbs, I think it just goes to say that, you know, your leadership, the team you have in place, it again shows the level of influence you have within the district. And then I wanted to call out something that I think we had last week. I was, I believe I was in DC when it happened, but the mental health fair that happened last week, I believe it had record turnout, right? I believe we had over 400 people in attendance. It'll be held at, oh, excuse me, thank you, thank you, doctor. I believe it was over 500, 500 in attendance at Umbel Civic Center. So, again, doctor, thank you again for your leadership, your team that was in place. Right now, again, when you tie mental health to empathy and kindness, it's ironic that we're talking about chaplains who absolutely have their place, but we're also talking about counselors in the same meeting. I don't believe it's ironic, I don't believe in the coincidence, but I believe all of that has its place, right, within our community. So, just want to say thank you, you know, regarding our counselors.
Thank you. Mr. Kirchhoff.
Thank you. Thank you to Martina for the kind words. Thank you to the board, the administration, and Dr. Fagan. Yep, my dad, my dad passed, and his funeral was Friday. My father was an educator for almost 30 years. He was a math teacher, he was a football coach, head coach, head wrestling coach. He didn't like the limelight. He, it's fitting, tonight, the chaplains are here and the pastors are speaking, and I do appreciate public speaking, to hear all opinions, even if we may disagree. But my father walked the same walk from the time I remember him as a kid to the time he laid down, and he walked a walk. He tried to follow Christ's footsteps and lived a life of faith. And, you know, he's in his eternal heavenly place, and he knows most of his family, if not all of us, will follow him. But thank you to the administration, the trustees, and Dr. Fagan.
Thank you, Mr. Kirchhoff. Ms. Parker.
I will be brief, but Ken, I wanted to say, I was so thankful for the time I got to spend with your dad. He was just an amazing, amazing, Christ-like man. He was, he was great. He was really good. Valentine's Week wouldn't be Valentine's Week without Sweet On Reading at the Oaks. And so, that is just always the highlight of my February, along with the many other things that we are able to do, the rodeo, and that's all I had.
Thank you, Ms. Parker. I won't belabor all the thank yous, I'll echo those, too. It's great, a lot of great recognition. And I gotta tell you, as far as the Unified Show, you may think the video is moving. It's great to be there in person. I've got to spend a couple hours again this year. I try to make it on my calendar every year to go, and you really should, because it's really great to be there in person and to see what those kiddos are doing, our FFA students, and working with the special needs students. It's just really great to see. It's very, very moving, and it also makes you feel great about youth and about the future. So, I'll end it there. Next, Dr. Fagan, comments.
Great. So, Jason Seibert, I believe you have an update on the halt litigation that you would be happy to share with us as far as where we are in that mediation, so we can set the record straight?
Yeah, we've provided what mediators we're willing to use to halt representatives in the fall and this week as well.
And so, we're waiting, because the way it works is everybody has to decide on mediators that everybody can agree to.
Correct.
And so, we have done our part.
Yep, they gave us a list, we gave them a list, we gave them a list again, and now we're waiting. It's in their court.
Okay, so, we're doing what we can do to move the process forward. Next, we had a phenomenal bond sale, and I mean phenomenal. And I am so proud of what happened with this latest bond sale. I'd like to invite Billy Beatty and Terrell Palmer up to the podium, because this is beyond any bond sale I've ever seen before as far as, well, I don't want to steal Billy's thunder. I do want to, but I'm not going to. But to have the kind of interest that they had in our bonds when another very, I don't know what the right word is, a district that had a huge bond went out at the same time, that was a little bit of a worry. But Billy's gonna tell us what happened and share the information.
Thank you. I am happy to provide an update on that very successful bond sale. You really never know what to expect when you go to market with bonds. Geopolitical changes, a market, a condition could present itself, and then just overall, who's going to market? So, there could be saturation that day, lots of bonds potentially. And leading up to our bond sale on Wednesday, there were some other districts that went to market, large issuances, and it, there was CPI reading that came out that kind of changed how investors felt that day, and so, you're always uncertain. And I'm happy to present that we had a very successful bond sale. We went to market with $150 million worth of bonds, and we received over $1 billion worth of orders for those bonds. So, that puts us in a really good position to be able to, with that type of demand, that seven times over-subscription for those, those bonds, puts us in a position to be able to negotiate those yields down so that it ends up costing taxpayers less money over the term of that bond. So, it's very successful, very pleased to have that type of demand for our bonds. And, and I believe that investors were eager for those bonds because they recognize the financial position that the district is in. We have credit ratings, this is a long process to go and have a bond sale, and over the past few months, we've gone through diligence and working with credit agent, credit rating agencies, and we have a very high-grade credit rating. We have AA. I think we have it up there 97, equal to or greater than 97% of school districts in the state. We have, and that puts us in a good position because there is a lot of bond authorization out there, so investors can choose where they want to invest their funds. So, us maintaining that high credit rating sets us apart when we go to market. So, and last week was an example of that. Along with Terrell and his team, I mentioned a lot of that planning, you always try and pick the right time, you never really know, there's never a guarantee when you go to market, but we, along with Terrell and his team's advice and our underwriting team, we were able to sell all the bonds at an all-in true interest cost of 4.037, which is really great for the market today. And I think our buyers really is, the list of our buyers is a who, who, who's who list of institutional investors, so the, you know, to have some of the largest, most respected institutional investors out there determining that our bonds are worthy of their, to carry in their portfolios is a testament of how they feel about our district. So, this, it's, it's good that we're able to do this, we're able to complete our project schedule for all the construction projects. This allows us to maintain our technology replacement cycle, stay on track with our foster elementary school rebuild, the mosaic program building, middle school 11, among many other things. And just to make sure everyone understands, we sell different, varying maturity dates of bonds, so if we are purchasing technology devices, well, we make sure that we sell enough short-term maturities so that we're not paying for devices that don't have a very long useful life. So, we try to match those maturities of those bonds to the useful life of the, of those assets. And just one more thing to highlight is that, along with Terrell's team and their support, over the past 16 years, we've maintained a consistent 35 cent debt service tax rate, and we've almost doubled students in that 16-year time period, and for us to maintain that, that debt service, it's, it's not easy. It takes a lot of work and planning, and, but that was our promise to voters to not increase that, that debt service tax rate. So, happy that we're able to continue to maintain and keep that promise. And Terrell, you have anything else you'd like to?
As they, I've been accused of grabbing the mic and controlling it for a long time, and what most people say is, Terrell, you let no meat on the bone, you know, for me to, to say. Billy, you've left, left nothing for me to highlight with that. So, but I just wanted to thank the board for having the confidence in our, in our team, and it was a wonderful sale, and we're about probably 40% of the way through our bond programs, and we look forward to delivering that other 60%. Thank you.
Thank you both, yes. I think that's it.
Okay, now we'll move to action items from closed session. Item 4A, personal recommendations. Mr. Sitten, may I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that the board approve the administration's personnel recommendations as presented in closed session with addendum.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, 7-0. Next is item 4B, student expulsions. Again, Mr. Sitten, may I have a motion?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that the board approve the administration's recommendation of student expulsions as presented in closed session.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? 7-0. Next item out of closed session, item 4C, Lopez versus Umbel ISD, Robert Scarfo, Mike Grabowski, Ken Kirchhoff, and Chris Parker. Mr. Sitten, or do you have a motion, or, do you have a motion, Mr. Sitten? May I have a motion, please?
I move that the board approve the joint representation agreement in the Lopez litigation and authorize the board president to sign the document.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor? 4-3, passes.
Can we, can we go through the full vote?
Sorry?
You said, like, can we go through 4 against abstention?
Oh, I'm sorry. Pardon me. All those in favor? We'll vote again. Opposed? 2 abstentions. 4, 2, 1. Okay, next, now we will move to action items. And I'm going to, we have some students here who, and there is an item, an agenda item regarding them, so I'm gonna go ahead and move that one forward, so it's already 8:20, so that they can be on their way if they'd like. The motion is, consider proclamation declaring March 2024 as theater in our schools month. Mr. Sitten, may I have a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. President, I move that the board adopt the proclamation as presented, declaring March 2024 as theater in our schools month.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
Okay, second, and we'll move to discussion, but I just wanted to read something just quickly, because this request came from Ms. Cox, who's in the audience, and there's other members of her theater group that are here, Bailey Cox, Lee Cox, Macy Dewana, Donna Woe, Soleh Hoskins, Brian Lippam, Sophia Marchionne, and Carrie Oval, and I heard their assistant principals here, Ms. Bennett. If you guys could just stand up so everybody could see you, just quickly. One second. So, their, so their request for this proclamation came from Ms. Cox, who's a senior at Summer Creek High School and president of the Summer Creek Playhouse. Kennedy's planning to become a theater teacher and will be attending Northern Michigan University next year. The students requesting our school board, are requesting our school board to consider a proclamation recognizing theater in our schools month, which helps Summer Creek maintain its status as an honor troupe with Texas Thespians, an educational honor society. So, now, open to discussion, and Ms. Parker, would you mind reading the proclamation?
Whereas every year in March, the American Allegiance for Theater and Education the-
Whereas every year in March, the American Allegiance for Theater and Education, the Educational Theater Association, and the International Thesbian Society Partner for Theater in Our Schools Month, to raise awareness about the value of theater education and draw attention to the need for all students to have access to quality theater programs. And whereas, theater is an integral part of arts education, describing, defining, and deepening the human experience. And whereas, all students participating in arts education courses benefit from the skills and processes developed through the arts and apply those skills in a variety of disciplines and settings, no matter their intended career path. And whereas, participating in theater contributes to students' development through heightened skills in listening, understanding human experiences, adapting to and respecting others, diverse ways of thinking, communicating effectively, uh, effectively analyzing nonverbal communication, reading self-expression creativity. And whereas, theater helps develop self-confidence and boost self-reliance. And whereas, as a creative outlet or as the beginning steps towards a professional career, theater programs in Umbel ISD shape the future of our young people. There are a variety of benefits that come from taking part of, in these programs for students of all backgrounds and professional and educational interests, including creative problem-solving skills, the ability to accomplish team goals, and many more. Now therefore be it resolved that we, the Board of Trustees of Umbel ISD, do hereby proclaim March 2024 as theater in schools month. On behalf of the district, hereby urge all citizens to celebrate theater programs and the students that participate in them, as well as work towards a better future for this important part of student education.
Thank you, Mrs. Parker. Uh, is there any other discussion on the motion before us? You not working?
Hi, yes, ring is locked.
Oh, okay. Okay. Yes, Mrs. Parker?
I do want to say how impressed I am that these young people came to us, lobbied us for this resolution to occur. So, thank you so much and, and your wonderful, wonderful students. We appreciate you very, very much.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Uh, no other discussion. I'll ask for a vote. All those in favor? All those in favor? Okay. Seven zero. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it. And feel free to leave. It's okay. Okay. Now I'll come back around, um, in the item 5A, um, use of chaplains under Senate, Senate Bill 763. Uh, Mr. Sitten, may I have a motion?
Uh, the motion is I move that the board approve the resolution regarding SB 763 as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. All right. We are open for discussion on this motion. Ms. Parker, then Ms., Ms., Dixon.
I, I was actually raising my hand because I will need Karen's assistance.
Oh, okay.
Since they rebooted everything here.
Oh, okay.
Do you mind, like, 30 seconds for her to come and assist me?
We've got an issue on the side.
You do? Yeah, the, oh, my apologies.
Yes, sir.
I'm just gonna sign in as myself.
That's what I think she was gonna do.
Off the top of my head what it is.
Do you mind if I read the resolution while, okay?
Okay. Order, please. Okay. Mrs. Parker?
Okay. So this is the resolution of the Board of, or the proposed resolution of the Board of Trustees of the Umbel Independent School District. Whereas, Section 23 dash 001 of the Texas Education Code permits the district to employ or accept as volunteer a chaplain to provide support services and programs for students as assigned by the board. Whereas, Senate Bill 763 passed by the 88th Texas Legislature requires each school board to take a record vote between September 1st, 2023, and March 1st, 2024, on whether to adopt a policy authorizing a campus of the district to employ or accept as volunteer a chaplain under Education Code 23. Whereas, the district has, uh, has in place, uh, Umbel Independent School District Board Policy C, uh, GKG Local, which governs the district's volunteer program, including qualifications to serve as a volunteer in the district. Whereas, the district has in place policies governing the hiring of individuals to serve as district employees if they are qualified and possess the required credentials. Now therefore be it resolved that the Umbel Board of Trustees, now, now be it resolved that the Board of, of Trustees of Umbel Independent School District hereby affirms the practice of a district campus permitting a chaplain to provide support services, programs for students in accordance with the district's existing, uh, GKG local policy. And be it further resolved that the Board of Trustees of Umbel Independent School District does not authorize hiring chaplains for counselors or mental health and behavioral health roles. An individual who is a chaplain would still be eligible to, for hire for such positions if they meet the same requirements and credentials that the district has set forth for a position and they are deemed the best candidate. All policies, procedures, and regulations would still apply for those positions. And, um, this, this resolution actually came out of our advocacy committee. And, uh, we did a significant amount of work on, uh, on this resolution. And, um, while we don't, while we currently don't have volunteer chaplains in Umbel ISD, we do have chaplains that volunteer. We do have chaplains as volunteers. One of the things that I love about living in Umbel ISD is how our community supports teachers, students, and schools. This includes our faith community. Our faith leaders and members of local congregations are often seen in our schools, reading to students, serving as mentors, catering staff luncheons, providing food security for children in need, bringing supplies, and more. As a matter of fact, 32 of our 47 campuses have faith-based partnerships. We would like to see that grow, I think. Or I, I can speak for myself. I would like to see that grow and strengthen. My family is active at church. Uh, my pastor, along with pastors from many, many other churches and congregations, met with district leaders on February fir- first to discuss Senate Bill 763. After this meeting, the school board's advocacy, advocacy committee developed this resolution, which, in, which affirms the importance of faith communities caring for students. We value our faith community helping children. Our resolution affirms that chaplains can provide support services and programs for students in accordance with the existing policy for volunteers. We also value, uh, the education, training, certifications, and licensures that counselors for varying needs bring to the district. Our volun-, our, our resolution affirms that hiring for counselor positions will continue to be done based upon the requirement and credentials of those job postings. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Parker. Uh, other discussion? Mr. Sitten?
Uh, Dr. Fagan, if I'm, if I'm reading this right, uh, we're basically affirming, uh, via policy that we're gonna continue doing what we're doing, what we've been doing. Is that correct?
That's correct. We met with a lot of our faith leaders, including Pastor Martin over there. And, um, we're very proud of the work that we're doing in our school district. Uh, the faith community has been very supportive in providing mentorship, food security, school supplies, and reading support to our students. And, uh, it's all under our volunteer, uh, policy. And so we're hopeful that we can, um, continue and expand on that volunteer policy and program that we've had in place for quite some time.
Thank you.
Other discussion?
Just as one point, um, to reiterate, uh, what Mrs. Parker said, um, in advocacy committee, we spent a significant amount of time, um, talking to others. We had multiple meetings, actually. Um, and, you know, we, we met with our state senator to really discuss the bill. We also met with faith-based leaders, um, for and against. Um, we looked at all sides. We, um, took a really, really deep dive. And so, you know, I believe as an, a member of the advocacy committee, um, just like when we do work in other committees, I hope that the full board is willing to support what we put together because we did the due diligence that we needed to do in order to move this forward.
Hey, thank you. Mrs., uh, due gentleman, I haven't asked you yet, Mr. Holmes?
I just want to, for clarity's sake, if a chaplain applied and had the credentials to be a counselor, Dr. Fagan, that this person would be, based on merit, um, fully accepted into the interview process?
Absolutely. That's the status quo. We would never exclude anyone based on their personal religious preferences or faith or other outside activities. So, um, we would interview a chaplain in, for a position that they are qualified for, like any other candidate. And if they were the best person, then we would hire them.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Holmes, did you have your hand up?
I did.
Okay.
I did. Yeah. So, um, one, again, um, Mrs. Parker, uh, Mrs. Lamond Dixon, myself, were part of the advocacy committee. Um, and again, we did take a really deep dive. Um, I believe it's in, um, Proverbs 11 and 14. It says, "There's safety in a multitude of counsel." And I believe we sought the counsel of several of our clergy, um, chaplains, um, faith-based community that were for and against and in between, right, middle of the road. Um, I really do believe that we, in, in terms of this resolution, it gives us exactly the benefit of what we've already been doing. Um, I believe one of our community members and parents just, uh, brought up that we were one of only, I believe, five, um, schools in Texas that received that grant. Thank you. Right? Um, on mental health. So for community members that were concerned about chaplains replacing counselors, that will never happen. We have a great counseling program. As you just saw, I mean, we just celebrated 10. Um, but I never want to dilute or minimize the importance of chaplains. I had chaplains that I dealt with when I was growing up. I had pastors that were mentors. So again, never to dilute or minimize their importance. It's just that this bill is a, is not a one-size-fits-all for every single school. There are some school districts in Texas that I believe this is absolutely the right program to do, but not for a 50,000-plus student district. We have a counseling program that is thriving, doing great. But let's continue the church and school partnership. If you're a chaplain, go through the volunteer program and you can do whatever you, you, you can to support. I believe I also heard from one of our community members, um, asking, you know, well, what about parental involvement? Dr. Fagan, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe all parents will know, right, that nothing happens without your approval, without your insight, without your, um, knowledge in terms of any volunteer, including a chaplain, if they go through the volunteer program. Can you touch base on that real quick? Cause I think there's a few parents that are concerned, well, you know, what if they're introducing ideologies and we don't know anything about it? Can you address that?
Well, first of all, there's no proselytizing in schools. I mean, that's the first thing. But second thing is, uh, and I think Pastor Martin, I don't mean to keep picking on him, but he talked about being a mentor for, um, a boy at North Bend. And, um, anytime that is the case, the school absolutely includes the parent in that conversation.
Hundred percent.
And they, they agree that, uh, yeah, absolutely. I'd love that. I'd like for my son to have that opportunity. Um, if a parent said, no, absolutely not. I don't want any mentor for my child outside of, of their teachers or coaches or whatever it is, we would certainly, um, respect that.
Thank you. And I just want to say again, lastly, I appreciate the community's involvement. I think to have the majority of the speakers talk, touching on, um, this, I believe, I, I really appreciated the amount of, um, our local pastors reaching out via text or direct calls. The chaplains that reached out via emails, the community, I really appreciated it. Again, just shows your level of, um, involvement and concern, um, about our students. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, let me circle back. Uh, I'll go, Mr., Mr. Kirchoffer, do you have anything? Cause you haven't gone yet. Mrs. Parker, Mrs. Lamond Dixon, and then Mr. Grabowski?
During the process, I specifically asked the question about what about the Umbel ISD Police Department? And this resolution, if, if they sought to, um, have a volunteer chaplain or hire a chaplain, this, what we're doing tonight, um, doesn't preclude them from anything.
Okay. Mrs. Lamond Dixon?
I just, just wanted to, I'd be remiss if I did not take an opportunity to thank Mrs. Parker for her leadership on advocacy. Um, I think we had really good meetings and I just wanted to take an opportunity to thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mrs. Parker, for the payoff of the board. Uh, Mr. Grabowski?
Yeah. The second group that I, I alluded to earlier that approached me, a lot of pastors and my pastor, Pastor Cuba from United City, and I spent nearly an hour on the phone and then some time in person on this. But the other group that really contacted me were teachers, that they feel a little bit uncomfortable, perhaps going to their school counselor who could be their peer, their friend, in some ways, somebody they'll see in the break room, somebody they deal with on a typical base, on a daily basis, that if they saw a chaplain in the school, that they'd be very comfortable going to the chaplain for that privacy and the conversation they might have to get through whatever issue there is. And then there's a lot of families in this district that have a lot of religious and spiritual affiliation, that I think having a chaplain walking the halls or in an office, that a child that has permission, that wants to approach that chaplain, should be allowed to. Are those two scenarios allowable under this resolution? That the teachers or the children with the parents that have given permission can approach a chaplain in the school to have those conversations?
So I would say that teachers are adults and they get to make their own decisions. If there is a chaplain volunteering in the school and they want to, you know, pull them aside in a, a private moment, that's really not our business. Um, as far as, what was the second part?
That to students that have parents' permission. So, the student belongs to the parent. And without parent permission, to protect a student, we wouldn't, I would like to protect the students by only allowing to go to the chaplain's phone to have parent permission. So-
Right. Well, that's, that's basically what we do now with our volunteer policy. So, if, if a-
That was the popular questions I was getting.
Okay. So is that, you satisfied with?
Yes, sir.
The answer? Okay. Thank you. Um, any other discussion?
Can I do one small thing?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just want to thank Jerry Mon Barron because she has worked with Loving Houston for many years. And without her leadership and that partnership, we wouldn't have the faith community partnerships that we have in our schools. It is, it's her community development work with Loving Houston that, that brings that together. And of course, all of the wonderful faith community that steps to the plate. But it has to be coordinated. We have to have volunteer policies. We have to have sign-ins and raptors and all of these things to make sure it's safe for our students and staff. And so that's Jerry Mon Barron and her team. And I just want to make sure everybody knew that. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Um, I'm just gonna add in because it's, it's starting, it's getting late. Um, my concern, religious issues aside, on either left or right, uh, whatever, is once again, this is an, to me, an unfunded mandate by legislature. And the way we, if we were gonna vote, say, yeah, we're gonna go ahead and take advantage of this, hire chaplains as, uh, uncertified, uh, teachers, uncertified, uh, counselors, um, the, the money to pay will have to come out of our sa- student, our safety allotment. And right now, at this moment in time, to me, the priority is that that money needs to go towards hiring officers so that we can meet our plan, uh, and also be able to pay enough to attract the officers here. So I, I'm, I'm sorry, but right now I can't consider that, uh, this option because you gotta look at where, how are you gonna pay those people if you were to say, yeah, let's do this? Uh, I think the resolution is, is a good approach to, uh, the issue. Um, I think it satisfies, I think, the need of the majority. You know, if you've got a bell curve, I think we're in one standard deviation from the, from the center. Um, and I think it, it covers what we need to. But again, I come back to, I don't want to spend that money, very limited dollars that we have for student, uh, out of the student safety allotment, to pay for, um, hiring chaplains to be counselors, uncertified counselors. I, I, I'm not denigrate. They, they do a great job and I hope we can continue to promote the program of volunteers and continue to grow it, make people feel welcome that they'd want to be here, uh, folks from all faiths. Um, and that's, that's what I have to say about this. So if there's no further discussion, I am going to, oh, yeah, okay. I'm sorry. Mr. Sitten, Mr. Grabowski?
Just a clarification. A vote affirmative for this is not voting to hire chaplains and spend money on that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. I- Okay. I just want a clarification on where you were going.
No, I was just saying that that's why I support this resolution the way it is, because that, to me, the other side, right now, it's the cost. Mr. Grabowski?
Yes, sir. By supporting this resolution, then, if a chaplain wants to volunteer and meets the standards, that's good. And if a chaplain has the credentials and has been certificated and applies for a counseling position, that money would come out of a different budget than-
Right.
It'd come out of the-
So, yeah, we have a position control system, where every single position is funded in the budget. And so, if a counselor retired, and we posted counselors, and a chaplain applied and was fully certified as a counselor and earned that position, then the position control number for the retiring counselor would pay for that person.
Okay. All right. Then I'm gonna call the vote. All those in favor of the motion, the resolution that was presented? All those in favor? I can't see. Ms. Holmes, okay. Okay. Seven zero. Okay. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to item, which was 5B, even though we're doing a third, is naming of middle school number 11. Mr. Sitten, may I have a motion?
I move that the board approve the name of Middle School 11 as Lake Houston Middle School.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any discussion? I saw Mrs., but I thought you were putting your hand up. No, you guys aren't. Okay. Ms. Dixon?
I totally support the name of the school, and we'll be voting in the affirmative. But I just wanted to bring it to the Building and Planning Committee. We did have a female, Cindy Wilson, who came and spoke a long time ago about the property and that type of thing. I, at an event recently with the Great Houston Partnership, I saw her brother there, and we had a little conversation about the school again. I think there may be an opportunity for you guys to meet with the Wilson family, for maybe some other opportunities, and maybe partnering in another way. And then also, just wanted to share that, and I can share their information and names. But, and then just to also say, after that conversation, then Mr. Welkum Wilson, Sr., passed away a couple of days ago, and I know he was, you know, an advisor to three of our US Presidents. You know, their family, that land that we're building on, was owned by a person who was on the first school board of UMBLISD. So, yes, I think Lake Houston is a wonderful name for the school. Totally, we should move forward with that, but I do encourage you guys to have a conversation with that family and see if there's any way to partner with them in some other way. Just a request.
Thank you. I'm sorry.
Yeah. Just to add on to that, so, there were two other families, and they're all, well, they're all tied together, the Sharpio family and the Weizenbaker family, all old UMBLISD folks, still around today. And met with them, they've been to my office a couple of times, and I agree, you know, if, we just need to look to see what's appropriate at this point. So.
Okay. No other discussion? All those in favor? Okay. Seven zero. All right. That'll take us to our consent agenda. Under item six, all right, Mr. Sitten, would you help me out? Are you ready? No. I'll wait. You guys are, okay. All right. Okay. All right. Item A, approval of minutes of the regular board meeting held on Tuesday, January 9, 2023. Consent. And if anybody wants to pull something, I may not be able to see, so just say, "Pull," okay? And I'll look. Item B, approval of minutes for the special board meeting held on Thursday, January 18, 2023. Item C, bond fund transfers and amendments. D, budgetary transfers and amendments. E, approval of goods, professional services, and non-construction services exceeding $50,000 in the aggregate, or $25,000 individually. Item F, 2023-24 construction and construction-related purchases. Item G, tax refunds. Item H, board authorization of inter-local agreements. I, approval of RFP number 2021-03R, supplies, equipment, and services for students with disabilities. Item J, approval of RFP number 2021-006R, educational service consultants. Item K, approval of RFP number 2021-009R, restaurant and catering services. Item L, approval of RFP number 2023-102, services, repairs, maintenance, installation, district-wide. Item M, approval of RFP number 2024-07-E-Rate, Middle School Number 11, structured cabling systems. Item N, approval of RFP 2024-19, third-party administrator, benefit consultant, and Cobra administration. Item O, approval of RFP number 2024-102-18, software subscriptions and web-based applications. Item P, deductive change orders. Item Q, architect selection of North Emergency Operations Center. Number R, item R, procurement and delivery method of foster elementary rebuild project. S, consideration of engineering services. T, consideration of professional services. U, program management services for 20, for the, for 2022 bond program, sorry. V, resolution regarding wages and staff contract dates for district closure. Item W, consider approval and ratification of engagement agreement with Ahua and Clark, and amendments the same regarding audit.
Pull.
Okay. Item X, consideration of amendment to board operating procedures regarding special meetings.
Pull.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Sitten, may I have a motion, with the exception of the two items pulled?
Yes, Mr. President, I move that we approve through consent, item 6A through 6V.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Okay. All those in favor? Okay. Seven zero. Okay. Now, we will circle back to the two items pulled. Item W, motion is, motion is to consider approval and ratification of engagement agreement with Ahua and Clark, and amendments the same regarding audit. Do I have a second?
Mr. Scarfo, I believe item Q was the first item pulled.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't hear. I didn't hear it.
No?
Is that correct?
Yes.
Q was not pulled.
Yes, it was. I pulled it.
But I didn't hear. Okay.
Well, I didn't-
Did you raise your hand?
You said to say the word "pull."
Okay. I didn't hear. Okay.
So, legally, what do we need to do?
Hang on.
And we shouldn't have not have voted on the last motion. Mr. Rush, what do we need to do to address?
You need a motion to reconsider the consent agenda vote that just occurred.
Okay.
Motion to reconsider consent agenda vote.
Second.
Second. Okay. Do we just vote on the approval? Okay. So, all those in favor of reconsidering the consent item vote? Opposed? Any opposed?
No.
Seven, all right. Okay. So, we'll go back, and, Mr. Sitten, I'm sorry, can you do the motion again? Sands, item Q.
Mr. President, I, I move that the board approve the- I move that the board approve the consent agenda, item 6A through 6X, with the exceptions of pulled item 6Q, 6W, and 6X.
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay. All right. Now, we'll circle back, and we'll start with item Q, architect selection for North Operations Center. That is, that is the motion. I need a second.
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 Okay. Second. Okay. Mr. Grabowski, you want to start? You were asked to pull it.
I do. We are being asked to vote to spend a lot of money on a plan we haven't seen. Again, I feel that this is a pattern of behavior where, in a consent agenda item is, buried in there is some contract, or some agreements, or some plans that we don't see, yet I'm expected to raise my hand and approve. So, if we're gonna spend millions of dollars on architect selection for the North Emergency Operations Center, I think it's only fair, as a trustee, I should see what the plan is, not just the statement to give the superintendent the authority to do as requested. And I haven't seen anything that would suggest what all those steps are. That's my big gripe, that, again, I'm asked to vote on something I haven't seen.
Ms. Dixon?
Yeah. Just, Mr. Grabowski, I just clarify, the way the process works with procurement and working in committee, when we approve an architect, then they actually come up with the design. We do not have them do typically a lot of lead work in advance of that. And I understand, I understand the hesitation. We just actually had a very similar discussion on the dais with H.CAB, because we have to redesign the boardroom with the new state laws. But the way the process actually works is, you actually select the architect, and then they begin the design. And they've already been, they've already, all of the architects listed in our wheelhouse, or, you know, in the bucket that, you know, we have, they've all been vetted for being good architect firms that do really good work. We've looked at their references and their backgrounds, so they're on the list for reasons stating that they're, you know, good firms to consider. So, I just wanted to clarify. I understand it can be frustrating to not see the design, but that is actually how the process works. So, just a little feedback.
Okay. Hang on. Well, Mr. Sitten had his hand up, I think.
Well, I mean, I was just, she pretty much stole my thunder. I was gonna talk about how we do our committee work. When we have committees, those committees do the vetting on behalf, do the work, really, on behalf of the board, and then bring it to the board. We, we did talk about this in our last Building and Planning, and again, we are not moving forward with a GC recommendation. It's an architect to start the design process, which is, which is how we do all building projects, all bond projects. So, just a little clarification, we're not authorizing millions and millions of dollars. We're choosing an architect to begin the process of design, which is, which is, there's so much lead time on any bond project that we do. It has to go through the design phase. You can't even start the permitting phase until the design phase is over. And we know, based on other projects, the permitting process takes about eight months. So, or longer. So, we're months away from spending millions and millions of dollars or something, and I can assure you that the plans and the timeline and the design and all that stuff will presented, will be presented as they come available, and as they've been vetted through the Building and Planning Committee.
Do you, Mrs. Parker?
Do you, are you, is your vision to vote no on, or can I say that?
I'm sorry. You can't ask him what he's gonna, how he's gonna vote. I mean, he could make comment, but, Mr. Rush, unless I'm wrong.
No, I agree. Stick to deliberating the agenda item and your opinion on it.
But do you want, do you just want more time to get more information on this item?
You know, we were given the minutes from the Building and Planning Committee, and in it was basically one sentence that we're authorizing $9 million to be managed on this issue, and yet, there was no plan in our minutes of how that money's going to be allocated. And I hear what Mr. Sitten and Mrs. Dixon are saying, but if we give permission for the $9 million, you're having me go out to say to everybody that I'm comfortable just to release that money without seeing a plan, and I'm not. The way it works, I understand how you describe that, but perhaps we need to look at how our committees work, that maybe they should be a little bit more, or able to give all the other trustees that are not on each committee, more detailed minutes that would have the plan and how we look into the future to spend that money. That's what I'm saying.
I'm gonna say, I understand what Mr. Grabowski's saying, because by even going ahead with this phase, with the design and hiring, engaging an architect, and whether we spend, you know, $1 or $50,000 or whatever in this design phase, I still aren't at the point where I feel the board has made a decision that we're moving ahead with another EOC, Emergency Operations Center. And I'm not saying it's not a good idea to do it. What I'm saying is, just like with all the bond projects, we go through the facilities process, where we look at, you know, all those things and decide what projects we're gonna do, I don't feel, I know there was a sentence added to our, when we approved the plan we were moving forward with security, to say, "Oh, we would, you know, look at doing this." It doesn't mean that we are necessarily going to do it until, I think the board needs to have a presentation be made to the board, and if it has to be in closed session, that's fine, because of security matters. But I would like to see, you know, the whys, the hows, the ifs, and are there other options? I'm, again, you know, I'm a big supporter of our law enforcement here in the district, always have been, always will be, but again, to tell me, "Hey, we got $9 million a room in the, in the, in the bond program that we haven't spoken for," that's not a good enough reason for me. True, that's there, and again, and if it's cited where it probably is going to be, and TERS dollars can be used, and we can use other people's tax money other than ours directly, that'd be great, too. But I would like to see, I'd like to be convinced that, yes, we absolutely need to do this, because there's no other options available to us, and we need to do those things. I don't know if that's where Mr. Grabowski was headed with that, but that's how I feel about this, to see, I'd like to know, I'd like to be convinced that, yeah, let's go full bore and do, and do this project the way it's being proposed. That's just my feelings about it. Dr. Fagan, you go next, and then Mrs. Parker, Mrs. Dixon, and then Mr. Grabowski, and Ms. Holmes?
Okay. Well, we've, I just want to mention a few things. We've talked about this multiple times, ever since House Bill 3 was born. We all agree that we are hiring well over 30 more police officers. Our current EOC will not accommodate 30-plus more police officers and their vehicles and all their things. The other thing is that when Kingwood went through Hurricane Harvey, one of our collective deficits as a district is that we did not have a North Operations Center, and we were actually sealed off from the Southern EOC and could not access it. So, our police officers lived at Kingwood Park High School, which was far from ideal with weapons all over the place and things like that, but, but we made it work because we had to. And the other thing is that we're interested, because of the shortage of police officers, in approaching partners to develop our own police academy, so that Chief Cook and Assistant Chief Jornay have a much easier pipeline into UMBLISD Police Department. To do that, we would need appropriate facilities to do so, and appropriate partnerships, which they are working on. And then the last thing is, there was a conversation about the fact that we just added an EMT program, where our students can graduate and become EMTs, and those are very nice salaries. And there is the possibility of doing the same with dispatchers. And so, the other thing we were talking about was the possibility of creating a student CTE dispatch program in the north at the new EOC, where students, once they're 18 and graduate, can actually be hired right in as dispatchers, 911 operators, and things like that. So, we'd been talking about this since House Bill 3 passed. We talked about the lack of room- We talked about the lack of room at the current EOC. It's, it's just got not much land down there, no parking lot really. And so Chief had shared with the hiring of all these additional officers that they would need additional space. When the board voted to pass a $775 million bond, there was, there was about $25 million that was unallocated at the time. Because it was a seven-year bond, that would hopefully help us with future needs in the district. And so when we talked about House Bill 3, it was our recommendation that the board look at that unallocated money and spend approximately $9 million on a North EOC, given the fact that we talk regularly up here about how important school safety is to all of us, our students, our staff, our community. And frankly, it would add another police station in Kingwood. The police station in Kingwood, if you recall, during Hurricane Harvey flooded completely, so they had nowhere to go. And so this would also provide a partnership with other jurisdictions, should they need one during an emergency. So we were talking about other partnerships there, we don't want to become the AAA team for Houston PD because we like to keep our officers. But nonetheless, there was just a lot of thought put into this. And then what typically happens with architects is you provide them with that list of things and they do what they call a design charrette with appropriate stakeholders and come back with a proposal. And then the board can choose to move forward with that proposal or not. That's, that's the way that the process works. So that was the way we were bringing forward the architect selection so that we could move forward with the process. But if the board doesn't desire to do that, then, then we won't.
Okay. I forgot the order, so was it Mrs. Parker?
Then me, yes.
Ms. Dixon and Mr. Holmes. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
So I support, I support this. I think it's a great idea, but it sounds like some of my colleagues aren't there yet. And so I would like to make a motion to table item 6Q until the March board meeting.
Okay, I, oh, sorry. Okay, I have a motion to table. I need a second, if that's what we're going to do.
A second.
Okay. And we're going to vote on the, the motion. There's no debate on, on that. So the motion before us is to table item Q, that came out of the consent agenda on the North Emergency Operations Center. All.
I want to, I got a question. Can I ask a question?
Yeah, but not a discuss, go ahead.
I want to ask Dr. Fagan. How much does this hold us up if we push it off?
Well, just, it just delays the start of the process, that's all.
Okay. So all those in favor of tabling this until the, you said March meeting? Okay. Opposed? Three, okay, four, three. So we will table this till the March meeting. But I'm going to ask if we could get some more detailed to the, for the full board, the, the whys and hows, why we need to do it, how we're going to do it, what other options there might be to fulfill some of the needs that we definitely have, so that we can then come back and discuss it at that point and hopefully we will see that, yes, let's, let's do this. But anyway, okay, so that, that one is.
So there can't be any other discussion?
I'm sorry? Not, not on this, no, we're, it's tabled, so we're.
Okay.
Okay, so, okay. Next item we had polled is the approval and ratification of engagement agreement with Ahua and Clark and amendment to same regarding audit. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, second. Okay. Discussion.
Yeah, I pulled this. This is another one of those, those situations where we've already engaged with this group. We didn't vote on it in public, assume that they're probably even almost finished or getting close to being finished. And now we're going back in time to ratify and approve work that's already being done or been done. I just, you know, my, my, my challenge is, is the process of, and we seem to be doing this regularly now.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Yes. Mr. Scarfo.
Yes, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I just, I kind of want to dovetail and double-click on what Mr. Sitton said.
Okay.
I, I'm just, I am a little confused in terms of why we're doing this now. And like I said, traveling back in time, so I just, I just need some clarity. That's why.
Okay, that's fine. I'm going to ask Mr. Kurt Choffer, since he is Chair of the Audit Committee.
The initial scope of work led into more work. They're done, and for them to finish and go all the way to the final report and get what we need, we need additional funding. But it's as simple as that.
Okay, any other discussion? Ms. Sitton?
Was this the original name that, that Ms. Fashon had recommended?
No.
No. So for clarification on this, to the administration and the board, it was recommended at the Audit Committee meeting, at the conclusion of the meeting, by counsel that was there, Chris Gilbert, to keep it away from the district, to use an outside forensic firm. And that's what, and that's what we did. We just followed, followed counsel's advice.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kurt Choffer, for the clarifications. Okay, I'm, yes, Ms. Dixon.
I'm sorry to disagree, but in that meeting, I don't recall him saying it in that meeting that we should keep it away from the district. And I, I sent an email after that meeting trying to get clarification about the switch in companies that we were using. But in the actual Audit Committee meeting, I, I don't recall a conversation about switching companies in that meeting.
Okay.
There was, there was no switch.
Thank you, I was going to say.
Yeah, there was no switch. And Mr. Grabowski was there in person, and we had that conversation. Then it went to closed, back to closed, right? And as Audit Chair, we went with that group because they're outside, they have not done work for the district. And to protect us and the district, that's why we used them.
No, and I, I do understand that part. I understand that they, we had not used them before. But I guess what, what I'm trying to say is that we did not actually just have that discussion in Audit Committee. Because I sent an email after the Audit Committee to get clarification because we, there was a change, but we had not discussed a change in Audit Committee.
Okay. If there is no further discussion, I will call the vote. All those in favor to approve and ratify the engagement agreement, as read in the motion, please raise your hand. All those opposed? Upstee, okay, four, three. It passes. Next is the last item that was polled from consent, and the, the motion is the amend, amendment to Board Operating Procedures Regarding Special Meetings, as detailed in the attachment. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, any discussion?
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Can you walk us through why this is there?
Yeah. Purely, it to me is a housekeeping item. The board policy does not match the board policy. The Board Operating Procedures do not match board policy. And as we heard in a previous meeting, and actually I think, Mr. Rush, you were here, not Ms., Mrs. Spalding, said that policy really drives the operating procedures. And so to me, this was just an item that's been sitting and for the last couple of months just hadn't had a chance to, to bring it forward. So I, I put it on the agenda to do this. So now the Board Operating Procedures will be in sync with the board policy. That was, that was the rationale for doing it. Any others? Ms. Sitton?
You know, the, the wording in this, before we start changing things, really ensures integrity of the board, majority of the board, things of that nature. What we're, what we're attempting to do is strike, strike out the verbiage. "In the event of a request by any board member to hold a special meeting, the superintendent shall poll all board members to determine whether a quorum of the board members is willing and able to attend the special meeting." We're going to get rid of that, according to this. And then it goes on, it says, "The board president shall call special meetings at the board president's discretion or on request by two members of the board," without any polling at all. Okay. "The board president shall call an emergency meeting when it's determined by the board president or two members of the board that an emergency or urgent public necessity as defined by law warrants the meeting. Members of the board shall be given notice of special meetings at least 72 hours." So I've got real heartburn with this. And, and one, we had a special meeting in December, on December 21st during Christmas break, where we were given the 72-hour notice based on an agenda without any prior polling of the board who's available, who's traveling, who's this. We have a pilot that travels a lot. We have another colleague that travels for business a lot. We have another colleague who's on multiple boards that's, that's all over the state. And we're going to get rid of the items that really, I mean, what would prevent two people from requesting a, a special meeting during spring break when several board members already have plans to be out of town? The way the wording is right now, the superintendent would reach out to the board to see who's available, and if they're not available that particular week or at that particular time, here's two more dates. It's, it's not squashing the meeting, it's, it's scheduling the meeting when the majority of the board can be there and not at the whim of one person or two people on a board of seven.
Okay. So what you have problem with is the board policy, because that's what's stated there is not, that wasn't made up by me. That is word for word, board policy under special meetings. I think our Board Operating Procedures need to mirror that. Now, if someone wants to bring up for future board discussion that the board policy needs to be changed, great, let's do it. But right now, what we have on the table is to have our Board Operating Procedures mirror our board policy, which I personally think that's what should happen because, again, policy drives procedures and not the other way around. Mr. Rush, if I'm speaking out of turn, please correct me.
Sorry. So, that is correct. Your policy is always going to control over procedures because policy is the policy statement of the district. The procedure cannot then contradict the policy, otherwise it's a, it's a moot procedure. The procedure was incorrect with the, with the provision about how many board members it took to request a special meeting by saying "at the request of a board member." That was incorrect. Your policy says it's two board members. That it's either the board president or two board members that can request a special meeting. So that will now align, if the board were to vote this amendment, with your board policy, BE local. And there is polling still in the offered revision, if I'm not mistaken, at the end about the superintendent still having the ability to poll board members for their availability. And at the end of the day, if a quorum doesn't make it to a called special meeting, there's no meeting. So it's kind of a circular moot point. If two board members call a special meeting, they're the only two to show up to the building, there's no meeting. That's just what happens.
Okay. But again, the way the policy is right now, it's not that two board members can do it. The two board members would request to the board chair if, and then the board chair would poll board members to see if, first of all, we could establish a quorum. If not, and if we can't, we can't, and you don't have, obviously you cannot not have a meeting.
Yeah.
Just not what it says.
What does, what's that?
Here's, it specifically says the board pres, I mean, "The board president shall call a special meeting at the board president's discretion or."
On request by two.
On request by two board members. That doesn't mean you have to agree with it. That doesn't mean you have, and there's nowhere in here where it says the board president will poll the rest of the board.
No, it doesn't, but you have to.
But you just said it did.
No, I didn't say it did. I said you would have to do that. But what it's, what's implied, or on a request by two board members of the board, they, the board members, board members other than the chair cannot call for a special board meeting or any other kind of meeting. They have to go through the chair to make the request.
But that's not what it says.
That's not what it says.
That's not what this says.
Well, I'm, I'm sorry.
It says "or." The board president, or.
And who would they make the request to, Mr. Sitton?
Well, they could make the request to the superintendent, I would think.
But superintendent, under board policy, doesn't have that authority to call a special meeting. That's the point.
But you're giving authority to two board members to actually make the decision, according to way this is written.
Okay. I, I disagree, but then what we need to do is change, change the policy. And we can't do that now.
Yeah, I want to make it really clear what your policy says. I don't want to get confused.
Yeah.
"The board president shall call special meetings at the board president's discretion or on request of, or request by two board members of the board." So that means board president has discretion and also shall call a meeting if two board members also request of the board president. That is what your board policy currently says. So I want to make sure we're clear. That's what it says.
So, yeah, go ahead.
So, Mr. Rush, are you saying if two board members, if Mr. Sitton and I decided we wanted to have a board meeting, I could, we could call Mr. Scarfo and say, we want to call a special board meeting, and he would have to do that because two people?
He shall call.
He shall call it. That's saying that if two board members say, we want a special board meeting, that it's not.
Right, and you'd have to have a quorum to do it. Like, one, if you can't get four people to agree to meet on certain date, on dates made available, then they wouldn't. Look, this is just, we have a Board Operating Procedure that's not in sync with our policy. And if people, now that they finally have read the policy, think that that policy needs to be updated and changed, we can certainly do that. We can't do that now because that's not on the agenda. Right now, what's on the agenda is, let's revise the operating procedure to reflect the policy, and if somebody wants to bring, and I could bring a motion next, next month to, we can make that clear if, if it's not, or people can ask to make a motion to have, have a policy, have a look at the bar policy on BE local, we can do that. But my point on this is that right now, our Board Operating Procedures do not mirror our board policy. End of story. I mean, I don't know what else I need to tell you that I can tell you. Yes, sir.
Well, then I would vote to amend the motion to table this till, for next month so that we can then look at board policy and Board Operating Procedures together.
Second.
Okay. Now, there's no discussion, so I, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. All those in favor of tabling this now? All those opposed? Okay, so the motion will be tabled to, well, Ms. Sitton, I'm sorry, did you say March? You didn't say, did you?
He said Fe, sir.
Okay, that's fine. We can do it, we can do it ASAP. It's fine, we can do it soon. Well, if it's not March, it'll be April. We will take care of it. But I, I just think it needs to get fixed. That, that's my point to the whole thing, and they need to, I think, match. Okay, so moving on to, we're, now we're back to informational items, I believe. We finished, did I have it right? We finished all the items, okay.
Intruder.
All right. Next, yes, is report from Mr. Perkins, intruder audit report.
Yes, sir. The Texas School Safety Center conducted an intruder detection audit pursuant to updated legal requirements. Ten schools were reviewed since our last board meeting. One finding was identified across all campuses reviewed. All corrective actions have been completed at this time. Further detail has been provided to the board and executive session for the purposes of safety and security.
Okay, thanks, sir. Any questions? Okay, see nothing, we'll move on. Next is updates from our board associations and committees. Are there any board chairs that would like to make a report? Ms. Sitton?
Just a special request. Dr. Fagan and, is Chief Cook still here, or is he?
He, he was. Oh, he is assistant chief.
Assistant chiefs here.
What I would, what I would ask, there was a, I think it was Mr. Scarfo had asked this question about the EOC, the North EOC. We got a really good presentation from Chief Cook at the Building and Planning Meeting, and I don't know if he would want to discuss that now it is getting late or at next month's meeting. month's meeting, have him on the agenda to discuss the presentation he gave us during Building and Planning.
Can that be done and open? I mean, I wasn't able to be there last.
The EOC could. Yeah, so you weren't there for that, but, yes, Chief Cook and I would be happy, and Jason, to present the plan for the North EOC that we would like to recommend at the next board meeting in March.
All right, thank you. That's all I had. Okay. No others? All right. And then last is, let me see where I'm at, item, you know, I'm gonna just jump up, Item 7D, Financial Services Reports. Any questions from the board for Mr. Beatty or Dr. Fagan on those reports? No? Okay. And last, we have, it was Item 7C, Gauging Interest Reporture of a Graduate. It's now 9:30, and I know Ms. Mount put a lot of work into this, and I'd hate us to not really focus on it. So, I'm gonna go ahead and move that we table this motion to next month as an information item?
Second.
I have a second, okay. So, all those in favor of tabling this motion? Oh, informational item, I'm sorry. Yeah, well, I know, but, okay, we'll move it forward. We, right, okay, that's fine. So, we will, we will do that next month. Thanks for all your work, and hopefully, everybody's had a chance to look. And if anybody has any questions on that, please reach out to Ms. Mount. If there's questions on how those surveys would work, how the different models or modes of surveying would work, please reach out to her, and she will provide you with that information. Okay, so that was the last item we had, and with that, it's 9:26, and I'll call the meeting closed. Thank you. Sorry, see, you told me I was done. All right, wait, all right, we gotta come back. All right. Last thing is, any items for future board consideration? We're unclosing the meeting.
Mr. Scarfo, technically, you've gotta reopen the meeting, since you already closed it.
Okay, all right. So, it's 9:27, and the public meeting is reopened. Is reconvened. And last item is, any future board business? Yes, Ms. Dixon?
It's just an item that I would like to ask Mr. Kurt Chopper, to ask Ms. Fashon to consider. A couple of things have come up over time about the board operating procedures not necessarily matching certain things in policy. So, if we could maybe audit the two and see where the discrepancies are, so that we can clean up policy or board operating procedures, so that we don't keep ending up here.
Yeah, makes sense, okay.
So, it's not really technically an agenda item, but something that...
Yeah, it's not an agenda item. Well, I'll ask Ms. Kurt Chopper, would you please ask Ms. Fashon, if she would do that, amongst all the hundreds of things she's...
Yeah.
Okay.
It's usually lawyers, not auditors, that do that, yeah.
All right, well, whomever is supposed to do that, like, to look at, side-by-side comparison.
Yes, we'll work on it.
That's what I was gonna say, without deliberating, yeah, without deliberating.
Yeah, no, that's, yeah, that's a good point. Okay. All right, so with that, if there's nothing else, I'm going once, twice, closed. Okay, closed for the second time.